I forget what I did.
We'll begin the work session in one, one to two minutes. We're just waiting for one of the other board members and Mr. Wooten will join us as we go along this morning. All right, so if we could stand for the pledge to begin today's work session of March 29th, 2018. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual liberty and justice for all.
All right, today's first item on the agenda is total technology reports on IT and we can have Mr. Rothar come up and Paul Novella. Novella? John, what happened to Bill? Yeah.
The shine up top was similar.
All right, we can begin. We had had total technology with us a little more than 30 days ago and we had, we were determining whether we could see some, we had some glitches with our system and we also wanted to find out for Newcastle, for our telephone voiceover, if they would be compatible. So you've had your 30 days and you've assessed the system, so just waiting to hear what the results were.
So from the last meeting, I'd stated that we had found some issues on the network switch that we resolved and wanted to see how that worked out over the next 30 days and it's been stable since. So we're fine with that part. There still continues to be some network latency, but in regards to the phone system, I don't think it's going to have any impact. Phone system's putting out a small amount of data per phone. I don't think you'll have any quality of service issues.
Okay.
I've spoken with Telecom Data Services and both, and Newcastle and we're all on the same page to move forward with the exception of the product called Fibridge on page three of their quote, which is about a $52,000 savings that you won't have to, you won't have to incur this expense. There was some confusion on the cabling that's being utilized throughout the town. They're completely fine with not doing this portion of it, utilizing the existing cabling, voice and data on the same, running on the same cables. They're still going to come out and it's our recommendation, they do their network assessment and make sure that everything is fine from their side. Any deficiencies they find, they'll report back. So maybe you need a cable, a new cable run or maybe a switch to deliver power out to the phones. But other than that, we're all on the same page and ready to move forward.
Okay.
With the voiceover update.
Okay, very good, very good. I know that there, there has been a question. I know that you were taking data over the 30 day period as far as if people are asked to put some, some, to report off on that and I know that there continues to be.
They're still doing that.
Okay, so, so just any update on, on what's going on with that?
I was looking at it this morning prior to coming here and I'm going to continue it after this meeting. There's been some, some areas of the buildings are getting better internet speed than others.
Okay.
So I've seen a, you know, a third difference or two thirds difference between sites or computers.
Just within the one building?
Just in the one building.
And was that, is that this building here?
No, that was 1295.
Okay.
But we're still connecting into the other sites remotely.
Okay.
And I'm going to continue troubleshooting after this meeting.
Yeah, the assessors office is experiencing significant lag time during the lunch hour time.
Right.
Have you looked into that?
That has been pinned down to the network backup running at that time. So I think for a small period of time, couple of days, they stopped backup running and it did alleviate that issue, but I think they've put it back into place. So you're going to experience that 12, 12:15 lag time still. And we're proposing a different backup solution that would alleviate that as well.
Okay, and when can we expect a proposal to?
I'm finalizing the storage requirements with Terry and Lori today.
Okay.
So hopefully in the next week or so.
Okay, and that should alleviate some of that, the lag time with the back?
It should, absolutely.
Okay, and, and then there was also to go on the Office 365. That's being discontinued at this point?
As far as not using Outlook and using the?
The Office 365?
I, that's one of the things I'm going to be looking at today, so I can't give you a full recommendation of saying, yes, just use the internet or yes, use Outlook, the Outlook client.
Okay, just, just, I, I'm sure you're aware, I think with some of the reports, with the Outlook 365 that the, there was a lot of lag time with being able to access the emails. So that wasn't, it's, it's not, people are not happy working with that as a, as a solution.
Understood.
So just to keep that in mind as you're going through everything coming up with solutions.
Absolutely.
And then also the workflow program with the IPS system. BAS is, has a proposal for the workflow system to add it into the software. So I don't know how many megabytes or gigabytes that takes up, Bill, do you have any idea?
No, that's actually, we, we host that, you know, we host that, so I'm not sure how, how much drain that is on our network. So we can sit with Lori. I think we, we have four modules now and this is going to be the fifth one that we're adding.
The fifth and final, I believe.
Yeah, so.
Do we have to host that yet?
Yes, BAS does not have, they don't host that product at this point. I mean, they're constantly changing, but as of right now.
Is there somebody else who, is there another place that we can host that? So it's not on our system?
There are places you can host. There's call locations that you can put equipment in or host a data center where you can run it virtually on their infrastructure, which would be my recommendation.
Okay, so then when you come with your full recommendations?
Yeah, we can discuss.
Okay.
Keyword being savings here, I'd like to hear that.
Yeah, yeah.
Absolutely.
And I think Jim Wooten will be very happy to hear. He's been working on this phone system for, to be able to do it for a while, so, so that's good news. All right, I think that's, that's it. Any other questions from anybody?
No.
No?
Sounds good.
Okay, thank you for joining us today.
Thank you.
Thank you.
John for Jeff?
Yeah.
Yeah. And the next item we have up is the chapter on environmental review. Larry, there's just a lot of feedback.
A lot of feedback.
Good morning.
Good morning, how are you?
Good.
I think that's, that's, no, no.
No, it's still bouncing.
Still got it.
That's the feedback.
Not here. Don't be scared of us.
I think it's a little better now. Now I think it's okay.
Yeah.
You want me to leave one for Jim or you want me to just leave it with?
Um, yeah, no, yeah, because he'll, he'll.
All right.
Jeff, do you want to start?
Well, I'll start, I'll start. As a result of the tri board meeting, one of the requests that came from the town board was, was the concept of establishing a separate and distinct chapter in our own code, which would be something that we, you know, obviously deal with Seeker and hopefully have a better grasp and handle as how Seeker applications that are coming through the town are handled. So what you have in front of you is a proposed new chapter, it would be chapter 225. It would be entitled Environmental Quality Review. It consists of 12, 13 subsections, one of them being the effective date when it would take place. I've left blanked the days of the resolution. I've left blanked the date that it would be published. I left blanked the date of the public hearing. As I understand it, we're kind of probably want to circulate this to the planning board, zoning board.
Yeah, I think, yeah.
And one of the things I don't know is whether you want also maybe done by DEC. I, I brought that because, you know, ultimately it will be sent to them.
Okay.
As, as part of the process.
I can contact them and find out if they'd like to, to be present?
Okay. So some of the things that we have, we have a, just a short definitional section which talks about the difference between what an EAF is and what an EIS is, environmental assessment form being the EAF, the environmental impact statement being the EIS. And reference to the state environmental quality review statute. And then we have as far as the role that the lead agencies would have. We have that spelled out kind of in 225 six as set forth. The Department of Land Management would be the town clearinghouse. They are essentially, de facto doing that now. So this would just establish by statute what they've been doing with regard to applications that are coming into the town as far as vetting them, you know, clearing them and assisting agencies and applicants with respect to issues that are identified through Seeker. We then have a section which talks about, you know, when certain EAF would be required with regard to type one and unlisted and we go through that process. There's a little bit of a description as to EIS preparation. Then there's a short section of these. We have a, a section 225 10 which is kind of left open for future action. Looking at the Seeker, the DEC website and looking at all the environmental sensitive areas or EAA or environmental areas of concern that have been raised. One of them is, that was designated by Suffolk County was the entire iconic estuary system in the river. So that's already on the books, that's in the DEC. So if you would go to the DEC site, plug in CEA, you'll get a listing of all the critical environmental areas that have been designated around the state and you would see a picture of that area. So, but that's the only one that's riverhead related, but it was designated by the county Suffolk.
It's also covered under the WSRR, right?
Not all, except.
Well, the Wild Cedar River is very good regulations. It's a little different than a critical environmental area because, because there's a process under Seeker where you can actually designate an area, a critical environmental area. So if you feel that there's an area that's either got archaeological significance or environmental significance or some other significance that would make sense to go to a local law, do a study and say, listen, this is an area that we want heightened scrutiny to be placed on, you could designate yourself a CEA. So that's something you could do. Southampton has done it with a number of locations, including the Shinnecott Reservation.
Well, this, this, this just allows us the ability at some time in the future, if we wanted to designate something a critical area that met a certain criteria or a certain threshold, at some point it gives us the ability to do that because this, it, it leaves it, it leaves this, this line in here. If you remove that, if you didn't have a critical area that the town could designate at one point, it may be difficult to go back and add it at a later date and add it to it. So it just gives us the option to be able to do it. It's a placeholder, correct?
I think probably one of the sections that everyone's going to want to look closely at is, is the 225 11, which is type one actions. Of course, all of those that are designated by DEC under 617 4 are already incorporated herein. And then we listed 11 that we talked about between planning themselves and CDA. So you may have others, you may want to amend these, you may say, listen, there's, there's additional things that I want you to consider as type ones. And basically what this does and what the Seeker law allows is for a local jurisdiction, and I'm going to use the argument of a 10 acre disturbance, for example. Seeker says 10 acres, you're, you're type one. We, they point out in their Seeker handbook, you can make it five acres or 7.5 acres. So you can do that and provide for a, a more heightened scrutiny if you wish, so.
But not on a case by case basis or across?
No, these, these are across the board. So example if.
And that's what these definitions would do. So they would, they would, they, they would provide them to be type, type one where right, right now it's at the discretion of, these would make, make them type one actions by town has decided that they will be.
If this gets adopted and you decide to go forward and you designate these particular uses as type one, when they come into the town for an application, they would become type one.
And this will streamline the process.
It makes it very clear. It removes a lot of confusion for, in gray areas when somebody comes in as to what, what work will be, be required of them to, for their application.
And that was one of the issues that you mentioned.
Yeah.
Continuing the, you know, we talked about type two, which we're going to have some further discussion on. And then finally, we just have a, you know, a catchall paragraph which talks about when it's effective and how it's being adopted, that it's being done for sort of the meanest form or law.
Jeff, what is the section of the town of Southampton code that deals with the Seeker act? Do you know?
157, it's a chapter.
Chapter 157. And did we pull a lot of stuff in here from there?
Yes.
It's a template, the format of it.
Did we exclude anything that they have that?
Well, they don't have things like.
Like Shinnecott.
Shinnecott.
But wouldn't that just be?
Their, their CEAs, I deleted entirely because we don't have locally designated CEAs.
And that's really important because we're not them and that's a really important subject that if you're going to designate it, we, you as five members of the board, need to really weigh in on and evaluate before we put on that list.
And just out of curiosity from the planning department and the applications that you've seen, are there any areas that you've identified that might be CEA areas? I know that we had Harper's Hill, that there was some archaeological concerns and things of that nature there and also along, there was some other copies throughout town, Long River Road when we were trying to get the state funding for the rec trail, that they were interested in doing some archaeological digs there.
Archaeological historic are really, really important. That we're going to need input from Richard Wines and the historic along. Those are like really target issues that are raising red flag in terms of needing further review.
Because if there are critically environmental areas, then I think that we should also have attorneys prepare for those as well.
Absolutely.
Well, I think that's why we've left this here, this placeholder here. So as things come up or things that we discover, that we can, we can add that. Very nice job on this place, thank you.
Thank you. So procedurally from here, do you want us to distribute it? How do you want to handle the, you know, going forward from here?
I, I can reach out to the boards and let them know that, that we have this. I'll have a discussion if they would like to hold another tri board meeting because Dawn has also done the work on the flow chart. So it may be time to have another meeting or we can present this all to them beforehand so they have it in hand. They can discuss it amongst their boards first and then we can have a tri board meeting with that. So I will schedule everything and, and let everybody know. But within, within a, you know, short period of time, we'll do that.
Okay, so we'll wait to hear from you.
Yes, I will just speak to them and then we can distribute it out.
Very good.
So, okay.
Perfect, thank you.
Thank you. Next we have Dawn for the Henry Pfeiffer Temporary Use Agreement.
Good morning.
Good morning.
So we were contacted by East End Disabilities because their space that they're currently using for a program that they call CAP, which is unrelated to our normal CAP.
You can just speak up a little bit.
I'm sorry, they have a creative arts program that they use, teaches life skills to people with intellectual and developmental disabilities through arts and they are losing their space, which was at Grace Episcopal Church. That's, I guess that parish is closing. So they're looking for space and the gentleman that sought to inquire about our Henry Pfeiffer Center is Matt Kurloff. He's with East End Disabilities and he is also involved with North Fork Animal Welfare League. So he understood the building was available potentially. So he said, we pay costs to.
Heat.
East End Disabilities pay costs, basically cost of, you know, whatever the utilities are at Grace Episcopal and wondered if they could potentially do that at the Pfeiffer Center since it was mostly empty. So we worked together with engineering, Lisa Salazo, put together the cost, the daily cost to us for that space and heating and electric and they would provide their own wifi. They would like to use the space from 7:45 a.m. to 7:15 p.m., Monday through Friday and potentially Saturdays from 7:45 a.m. to 4:15 p.m. for their program. And the program, I just want to see, they would provide wifi for themselves. They would cover all electricity, which we didn't spec out the water cost, I have to find that out. And they would provide a dumpster and they would also provide stewardship to the building. They know North Fork Animal Welfare League does some things there. They would, you know, give them access, save us time. And so we thought it might be a good idea to ask the board if they could do that.
So they're going to clean the building and everything? We don't have to send any janitorial?
They're not asking for any help from us. They're providing their own toilet paper, not to be, you know, overly information full. But so paper towels and cleaning supplies, they would do, they're really just looking for space to do their program, which, you know, sounds like a valuable program to the community. So they also do classes for community habitabilization classes, which teach, I'm reading from his letters, sorry to you, independent living skills, nutrition, budgeting, vocational, people with intellectual and developmental disabilities. So I spoke to Ray Coin and Ashley and there's a little bit of a conflict. There's a home music, homeschooled music program that runs out of there till May, I think on Thursdays for just two hours. But, you know, I know this group was very willing to sort of work with whomever they needed to work with to get the space that they need.
So they wouldn't be displacing anybody by using the building there?
No. Not, you know, according to REC, not according to them who also use the building. He also just emailed me another quick note this morning. He said that he was talking about the veterinary services that North Fork Animal Welfare League provides and that they would, you know, coordinate with them. I guess they do spa and neuter clinic there or something. So.
So the only thing that I can see, if they want to use it until 7:15 at night, is that we have the quarterly RAB meetings there. So they would have to, you know, vacate the building for the RAB meetings with the Navy.
That was just on Sa- oh, no, Monday through Friday, 7:45 to 7:15 p.m.
And the RAB meetings usually start at like, they start setting up at like six. So on those days when we have the RAB meetings, they would have to, you know, get out of the meeting early so that the Navy can give the community progress on how the pumping of the plume is going.
Yes, and I think, you know, from my conversations with Matt, I think he was thrilled to have the opportunity to have the space and I'm sure they would do whatever they could to accommodate. We'd have to just let it all out and make sure that they were aware or whatever. I spoke to Anne Marie this morning, just relating to how we would do this and we, we agreed and she was happy to do a license agreement for them, which means it's revocable, which means if there was something that happened where we needed the building for some reason, we could just take it back and obviously we'd give as much notice as possible. They have their insurance, our insurance would cover their liability, they would indemnify us. That's the typical license agreement information. So I just brought it to you because we would need to do a resolution to authorize the supervisor to sign a license. And, you know, the, and I just want to make sure it's unclear. So we had suggested maybe 1,500 a month. It's a little more than the actual costs. I think we came up with like 1270 as the base cost. I don't know how that swaps out winter to summer because oil would be less and AC would be more. So, you know, that would be a different cost in the summer. But I think it probably would level up off during the period that they use it. And if we used our normal REC fees, the daily REC fee would add up with the hours that they're looking for like 2,500 a month. So we had thought 15 would be a good number, round number. They haven't, I haven't proposed that to them, that's just something we're talking about. But if that's something you're willing to consider and do, then we would continue to talk to them.
And the day camp that we had for, that John Donlevy ran there for the, that one week, I believe?
Yeah, I don't, you know, REC, we would need to ask REC just because I'm not sure.
They're here today, so we can double.
Yeah, so we can follow up with them on that one.
Yeah, just because I know they had a one week program that was there that John Donlevy used to sponsor. Do you remember?
I don't, I'm not familiar with what you're talking about.
Yeah, Ripley was local voted, it was for the.
Kids?
Yeah, for the kids, yeah. So just, we'll ask.
That would race, see if it's been scheduled.
Yeah, we could follow up, you know, this is sort of a fluid thing. We've just, we're talking and, but before we go too far down the road, just make sure the board's on top of it and okay with it and we can, you know, we can work, kink, work out the kinks as we go.
It's also, you know, for the utilities, if, if they do spike up for some reason, that they cover any overage of what the, what the cost is. If it, if for some reason it increased more than what we anticipated while they're being using it, I, just if we can have that working there.
Yeah, because I think the original, this, and he, this is the email from last night. It was a little later in the afternoon. 7:15 p.m. wasn't the number that we had originally talked about, it was earlier in the day.
Okay, so we can just clear everything.
Yeah, work that out. And that Saturdays, we didn't look at at all, but.
So from the board, is a sense of moving forward? Are we okay to, to have Dawn pursue this further?
Yeah, I don't have a problem.
I think it sounds like a language.
Won't we talk like courts or something?
Yeah.
It actually saves us the, the maintenance of the, running the building. So Jody, are you okay to move forward with it?
Yes, I think those groups can coexist nicely.
Yeah, it seemed like it could work out. They seem very flexible, obviously.
I think they're an asset to our community.
Yeah, they definitely were very excited and grateful that you would even consider it, so.
Very good.
All right, good.
And you are up next also with opportunity zones.
So let me just swap.
Do you want to examine them or do you want to do it later and make this group an investor over here?
Oh, look, opportunity zones is a little bit different, so we can just kind of fly through that. So this is very, you may have read in the paper recently Southampton and Brookhaven are working on opportunity zone. Just going to give you a little, a little snapshot of what we're looking at here. So opportunity zones is a federal program and it's basically intended to, I'm sorry. To encourage.
Just so he has the paperwork when he comes in.
Oh, sorry, encourage development and this is our census tract. Lucky us, we are qualified. Yeah, you, sorry. It's a federal program, it's from the new federal tax reform legislation and it's going to hopefully create desire to invest in low wealth areas. So our downtown happens to be a qualified census district, which is, you know, there are not many on the island. So lucky us, we can maybe get another tool to, to help get investment in, in different parts of our town. In addition to the downtown, we also have the opportunity to request contiguous zones.
That would be wonderful.
So the contiguous zone, obviously, we would suggest would be at Cal because that is another place that's ripe for investment. And what it would do is it's, it's, it's the best way, I guess, I was like, it's sort of like New Markets Tax Credits because it's a help, but it's a little different. It's set up as a fund, so people can invest in this fund and basically reduce or eliminate their capital gains on other investments.
So it's for their whole portfolio, not necessarily what they can, they can use the tax defer for other, other property.
Correct, and it's a long-term investment. It's a really interesting program. The way it works is we would have to ask the governor to recommend our zones. I had a meeting, Tracy Stark and I and Joe met with EST on Monday and they, we discussed with them and we gave them the entire, you know, shovel ready information for Calverton and all the downtown, you know, all the studies that we've done that make it really ripe for investment. And hopefully, you know, this is sort of a public-private interesting program where we can get people who have lots of money, bring it to places that don't have lots of money, which is exciting.
Is this competitive for their?
It is, it is.
Okay.
So we, so every state in the country, I mean, will, there'll be a certain amount of, the governor can nominate up to 25% of the low wealth districts. So the governor, we have to request from the governor and EST will do that for us. And so what I was asking you all was, would you want to have them do that? I think you probably would, but I want to make sure that everyone's on board with that and.
And that's, that's one of the resolutions that's in there today?
Correct, I put a home rule, a request.
Yes.
And, and I corrected it twice and resent it to John. I'm sorry about that, but we're just kind of like moving quickly through. But basically it also outlines the, the studies and pre-work that we've done to make these areas most optimally developable.
Is this just the census tract on the map, the highlighted area?
And this is what they, this is what they've identified. So the map came from the state of selected opportunity zones in, within New York State and this is what, what we received from them. So they sort of pre, pre, not pre-approved, but predetermined areas that if you were located in one. So they sort of pre, pre, uh, not pre-approved, but predetermined areas that, if you were located in one of those areas, then you should be applying for this, um, because you're, you're, you're at a higher consideration rate, I guess. I don't, I'm not sure exactly.
And so twenty-five percent of our, of the low wealth census tracts would be recommendable, and five percent of the non-low wealth contiguous tracts, which is Calverton would be a non-low wealth contiguous tract. So basically, I think if you're all good with it, I want to let ESD know today by telephone. I did tell them that we were gonna discuss it today. They need to know today. They want to do their work tomorrow.
Okay.
And if that's acceptable, then we'll go ahead and move forward, and then you guys can do this on Tuesday.
Okay, so once again, everybody okay? Yes, yes, yeah.
All right, wonderful.
Very good.
Thanks for jumping on it.
Yeah.
Well, we've been kicking it around. It was, it was extended, the time to respond was extended a little bit till April, so it was originally a March deadline. So we were working on it ahead, and then we were kind of ahead when, when it came to that.
I think this is a great opportunity for revitalizing downtown and bringing investment dollars here, so, so I.
One more, one more tool in the toolbox, okay? So, good.
Thank you. Keep going. All right, so next, um.
So we're gonna skip the state roots, just because our next one, Drew, we're gonna come a little bit.
Okay.
We'll go back to it.
Okay. Oh, you're gonna sit for, okay, yep, okay, very good. So Ray and, and Dawn for the RFI for the EPCAL recreation.
And this was kind of a team effort.
Zone? This is another exciting thing. Ray, before we start, there was just a question with one of the last about the Henry Pfeiffer Center for the temporary, possible temporary use agreement. Um, Jody had brought up that John Dunleavy used to run a one-week camp out of the Henry Pfeiffer Center. Is that still ongoing?
Uh, we haven't run it out there in a while. We run it out in, um, uh, at the Tag Building and, or G Y C C. We only did it the first year.
Okay, all right, okay.
What was it, you know, what? The Iguana Camp. The what? The Iguana Camp. It's the kids that we give, one-week free camp that can't afford the camp. I'll just give you guys for a visual. This was the original design of Calverton Park. Back there, you can see some of the coffee stains on it from all the years.
Where did that come from, Ray?
This is in my office. We had so many different designs, uh, but this was the original, the ball fields, uh, multipurpose fields were over here, and this was the middle. So you could see we developed this, we developed some of this, but it was a three-phase plan.
Okay.
Are the guys on the ground for the whole thing?
Yeah. That's one smart thing.
Yeah. You were walking while you were walking?
Yes. That's right.
You're doing the cast of the fire pit part.
Okay, so we did a quick PowerPoint, um, just to talk about basically public-private partnership and leveraging our assets for, uh, building new facilities. So, you know, as you all know, and I think you had a nice conversation with Ray last week and Ashley regarding just the current situation of having a hard time, you know, developing new recreation facilities and maintaining the ones that we have. One of the things that we've been talking about on and off is public-private partnership and ways to get our facilities developed, uh, you know, creatively. And this is going on all over the country. We've, you know, kicked it around a few times, but we do have assets, valuable assets, in particularly at Calverton in this, um, park. So there's, you know, land we have for, which we were, you know, gifted and the town wisely set aside for recreational facilities for the residents way back when. And if you take a look at the plan that Ray brought over, this was done, um, when was this done, Ray? A long time ago, two thousand and six?
Yeah.
You know, this is the dream plan, what you would want to do here and how you could develop this facility to serve the residents of the town. And if you, you know, look at it and thinking about the meeting that you had last time, you know, how you would ever build this.
Maybe beyond our means at this point.
Yeah, and, you know, and then it's not just building, it's maintaining, that's the issue. So, so, um, and running, you know, there's all that. But, but this was a great gift, I think, and it's a nice dream. It doesn't have to be exactly this way, but I think thinking about, um, what we want in the future is important and how we can get that done faster, because if we do the, the way we do it now with bond, bonding, borrowing, and taxpayers, it's just, you know, we won't be dead.
This is made in two thousand and six, so we're twelve, we're twelve years, twelve years later and.
So we got this part done, and we got some, we're just, we keep the concept together. The multipurpose here, the ball fields here, and the middle part with all the different things that we're gonna put in here. So we're keeping this, and we're just slowly trying to build it. This was built, we put the dog park here, we put the, um, the, uh, what's the one court in there? But the tennis court's gonna be, a dog park's supposed to go in here, volleyball court's supposed to go in here, uh, playground. We actually started with the playground over here, but we're gonna put the large playground over here. So the plan's still there as soon as we get money. A bachi, that's the word I was looking for. I was putting the bachi in here. So it's just a slow process, but we'll get it done.
Yeah, and this is before pickleball existed.
Yes.
Before what?
Before pickleball existed.
Yeah, pickleball's emerging.
An emerging sport.
Oh, my God, yeah.
You know, I think, um, how you get that done, it would be amazing to have and a great resource for the residents, but how you get it done is, is the question. So, you know, public-private partnership's been done on recreational facilities all over the country, and it's, um, you know, so we started doing some research and thinking about how we could leverage our land to get the things that we want. Um, and so if you, if you just, I guess we can just click to the next slide. So basically, it's just public-private partnerships are stuff that we do every day. Grants are public-private partnerships. Government gives grants incentivized, and I hate that word, sorry about using it, but it's to, to create incentive for people to do certain things. So develop, uh, opportunity zones, public-private partnership, where, where they, they give.
It's a collaboration of, of resources, really.
Yeah, exactly. And so it gets everybody what they want, um, to achieve the common goals. There's a million different examples, there's a billion different structures. It could be done, um, and we'll show you some of those examples as we go along. But because of our low private, you know, our, our low public funding opportunities and having, you know, the taxpayers basically backing all of that stuff, and the decrease in the revenue in our REC funds that came from the residential development over the years, you know, we really haven't been able to kind of keep up. Um, so that, this is one way where we can think about a different way of doing things. And I just, this is, this is kind of interesting. I think this will resonate because the board last week was just talking about, you know, if you look at the, the, um, left side, limited, less cash available from local authority for reinvestment, you know, down to the left, facilities deteriorate, participation falls, negative impact on blah blah. And then it just doesn't, it, it's, it's not self-sustaining, it doesn't work necessarily. Versus if you were to inject private funding into it, you know, you get better facilities, which meet the local needs, maintained over the life cycle, participation increase, revenues increase, because these economic, um, these recreational facilities are also economic development engines. And one of the things that I've learned in my own world is that I attend a lot of travel across tournaments, and the amount of people that in, infiltrate into these communities and spend money is really kind of shocking. And I have a little of that information as, as we go along, so. Um, the next is, this is, this is one of the places I actually have been. And when you walk there, you say, how the heck did this ever get done? Like, who did this? This is a public, you know, public facility. So this is a little different structure than we would probably be doing, but basically in this case, and this, this did have a little bit of, um, the people that owned the Discovery Channel sort of infused some money into this. But basically, the municipality had a plan for about thirteen different multipurpose fields, no money to do it. They had the land, but they have no money to build the field.
Was it already designated parkland?
Uh, that's a great question. I don't, I did not ask the person that I spoke to there, but I'm gonna say probably yes. Um, and they partnered with a not-for-profit who, who is interested in really building a soccer complex. And they added another, uh, it's a total of twenty-four fields. And if you go there, in addition to the fields, they have a stadium, they have a indoor, um, basketball sort of multipurpose facility. They have a pond on the right there with a little dock there. People can go fishing, it's docked for fish, and it's a real community facility. In this case, it's run by the not-for-profit, and the community residents don't get a discount when they use it. It's, but if you, if you look at the economic development that this has generated.
Did they just have one, one partner in it, just the one not-for-profit?
No, then, yeah, the not-for-profit is the one who built it. The, the town donated the facility for the construction of the recreational fields.
So the incentive for the development of the fields is that they can collect the revenue for the rental of the fields?
Yep.
And, and recover all their costs associated with the bonding and?
There's been no public funding into this project since it was developed in two thousand, so.
And there isn't any lodging there?
No, not at all. It's just, it's really just athletic.
But the benefit to the community is strictly economic.
Yeah, so if you, if you look at the next.
Well, jumping on that, Jim, I mean, the, the hotels, the restaurants, the downtown shops, uh, it's a seven-point-six-billion-dollar industry now, and municipalities all across America are building these for that reason. Uh, it's just come out of nowhere. These youth, that's what they do, there's vacations now, these families are all traveling to these youth tournaments. So that's why we think Calverton's a perfect, perfect venue for that.
If you clicked on the next one? So basically, you know, this is just some of the financials on it. I spoke to the lady who runs the executive director of it, um, a few times, and so they have a sixty-four thousand square foot. The cost was fourteen-point-one million, so that's certainly something that we don't have in our back pocket, nor would we probably spend it on this if we did. Um, the county and the state put in eight-point-one million for infrastructure. We've already made those investments at our facility. We already have everything there, other than the sewer, but that's a whole other, you know, who knows what goes wrong with that. Um, the financing's gonna be paid off on this in twenty-twenty-five. They lease it for a dollar a year from the municipality. And basically, they manage and keep it maintained. And if you ever have been to anything like this, it's blow your doors off. My daughter, who's been like.
I used to say a private sector does a better job.
Played a lot of sports on a lot of different surfaces. She, she was probably nine. She looked, looked at me like, and she reaches down and touches, and she's like, that's, that's real grass. Like, it was real grass, fields clipped like this, perfect, it was amazing. She was like, rolling away. So, and so if your nine-year-old can notice that, I think, you know, people would understand how valuable and exciting it is to think about even having something like this.
So, but, uh, just a question. So like PAL and all of our youth organizations that we have now that currently use the fields and, you know, I don't think we're charging them, right, Ray?
Yeah, no, not yet.
Okay, so then, you got that yet in there, right? So then, what happens with that? They would all get charged?
That's a great question. It's all up to however you guys decide you want it to work, because it's, it's, it's the give and take. What do you need, what do you want, what is somebody willing to do? What is the market gonna accommodate for them to lease space or rent space? Um, there's a couple more examples of different structures that, that's unlimited, really, other than the law end of it, which is we can't only need our parkland, but Anne Marie's been working on it with us, and we've discussed it a multitude of times. It's a lot of, you know, we have a good amount of latitude in what we could do.
Yeah.
I think chief, what, the chief thing we would put in that contract is that any recreation program, PAL program, you and us a little league get first priority at this town park. So we're gonna write that in. I know other municipalities have done that.
And we could ask them to designate fields just for our exclusive use, perhaps? Maybe they would maintain them for us? You know, there's just really kind of a lot of options.
And this is really a request for information, so we don't know what we're gonna get back. You know, we may get something back that we haven't envisioned right now. I think that's the, the beauty of being able to ask, ask for, for information on how to, um, enhance these fields is, is that we let the private sector, uh, come back to us with, to with what they think is feasible here. Understood. It's the same exact approach to the, um, courts and the police station on Center, Ibsorn. And that we put out an RFI, and they come back to us, the private sector, and tell us what they think should go there where it would make sense for them to actually build it for us.
Yeah, somebody has to be able to make money. That's the only way we're gonna get the private sector engaged in it, is if they can make money. So that's really kind of the key. So what they can make money on and what we need is that's where you strike the balance and figure it out.
Yeah, right, they have the vision and not the land, and we have the land and the money.
Correct, yes, yes, everybody.
We have the vision, we just don't have the money.
Well, that's true.
And that's the case everywhere. I mean, the government everywhere is having trouble maintaining its rec facilities. I mean, that's not uncommon problem, particularly with all the, you know, economic problems that have, you know, that existed in the past few years. So if you, if you look, um, I think, I have some more economic data, but the next one is this Crescent Moon Park. And I just put this in here because this is just an interesting comparison on Arizona, the US Forest Service let one of their parks be privately managed and the other publicly managed. And the privately managed one generated forty-five thousand dollars in revenue to the community, and the other one cost the, the community two-hundred-and-thirty-five thousand dollars. So that gives you just an idea of what, you know, how it can be done and maybe save some money. Um, the next one, and this is just a different structure. This has not a municipality, this is Peter Collins Park, this is up in Nausa County. The soccer community there wound up getting a, a former military area that was vacant, donated to them, and they built the fields, and, and now they have a nice park. And that's also run by a not-for-profit soccer organization. But the, the not-for-profit can generate funding and reinvest it into the facility, which generates economic, you know, development for the community around it. Uh, the other one, here's Diamond in the Pine, this is right in.
Right back here.
This is Metford, this is Metford?
Uh, it's at Forum.
Yeah, like up, up on, I'm talking.
At two point twelve, yeah.
So we've, we've been there a few times, my son, my family. A beautiful facility there and very accessible to the community. This was donated, uh, by the developer Avalon Pines, uh, and they did some of the work there for the community when they built their condos, and so that could happen too. You don't know what, what is in store and what's down the road, but that's another way to save money and get, get, you know, that public-private partnership going. Uh, and that's a really nice little facility. This is right in our backyard also, Southampton Youth, S Y S, I'm sure you've heard of it. That's Southampton Town, donating the land, the youth services financed the projects, and it's an amazing little facility for indoor sports out there, um, and.
Now, where is that located, the entrance?
That's out like Neuyak. It's kind of like up in the back.
Major's Path?
The Major's Path, yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
You hear it on the radio all the time, they do, they do great stuff there. They have a lot of indoor facilities. Joey clipped the layout of their indoor, you know, they have basketball, squash, they have a pool, they put a pool in, right, Joe?
Squash, you say squash?
I don't play squash personally. Well, we could, we could do whatever we want, we would want, would work for us, fitness room, batting cages, you know, all kinds of stuff. There's a community room in there. I'm sure REC could use that. Just some pretty pictures of what their stuff looks like out there and what they're getting done.
Ray, you can give our kids here a jump on the pusses and the indoor recreation facility, that's for sure.
I always said if I ever won the lottery, I'd bubble something for them, because it's, it just, they don't compete as well nationally because they don't get outside early enough, other, you know, communities are. Anyway, uh, basically, if you take a look at the next, this is just economic impacts. This is, they have twelve major tournaments a year at the Maryland Sports Plex. Generates, they had thirteen million visitors. They have, um, from July to December, they basically had, let me remember. Uh, the out-of-town visitor spending was thirteen million, eight fifty-nine, five twenty. Their sales tax was a million, one eighty. Um, and the local businesses, you know, when surveyed, said it was important or very important to their business to have the facility there. And, uh, their average, eighty-three percent of the people surveyed responded that their average business increased by thirty-three percent. So it's not, it's not a joke that, you know, sports is big, big money and, um, you know, and could be big money to somebody and great facilities for us, so that's kind of where we're at.
This here's the national breakdown. I mentioned that to you guys, thirty to forty-five million children ages sixteen to eighteen are playing organized sports now. Twenty, twenty-five million in organized, fifty-three million, uh, traveling athletes participate in youth tournament events. Uh, seven-billion-dollar industry, so.
This is the average spent at a, at a tournament?
Yeah, this is for, uh, on, this is how much a family will spend for a weekend, accommodations, restaurants, meals, groceries, things like that.
That's close to a thousand dollars.
And that's if you have a boy, 'cause the girls make you buy swag. Just letting you know. Because I've done both. The girls, they put like the little chute in there, and they're like, oh, so, um, more t-shirts and straights. But anyway, um, so that's basically what we're thinking, you know, we would like to have you consider, uh, kind of kicking around. So we have a next, you know, what's next, uh, slide. Basically, this is just more pictures of what it looks like. And so, um, just like anything else, we had done this once with the downtown, um, visioning project, and, um, we would need to, uh, come up with. And, um, we would need to, uh, come up with, we have a master plan. I think probably needs a little work, um, maybe a little bit of, um, market study. And then think about what, what the priorities are for this board and the community, recreationally speaking, and then come up with a concept. And then, you know, eventually boil it down. We wind up with a, uh, an RFI, RFP. And then it's a qualified and eligible sponsor. Again, not to give you guys more than that, but, um, but, but it is an urban renewal area. And that is another thing that works nicely because you do, you're already poised to have a developer that you think, it doesn't have to be the lowest bidder. It could be someone that you think is more qualified, that has the resources to do it, and has a plan that's financially, you know, sound. And then you can do that, right? So I don't know if you wanted to address some of the legal issues.
Uh, yeah. I mean, you and I already spent a better part of the year in court, so we know where to go.
Yeah, yeah.
So I think it's just important to identify what the needs of our local recreation programs have and make sure that that's in the RFI so that people know ahead of time when they're bidding or when they're responding that, you know, we need the fields from April through, you know, September or whatever it is, or one field, or whatever you and Ashley decide needs to be designated for our local youth.
And then we sort of got motivated to thinking about this more because we had a few different inquiries over the past year and a half, right? Different people coming in and saying we'd like maybe...
That's what I'm saying. Should we let the market generate what, what the RFI is as opposed to putting in what we, you know? Because otherwise, we're having to, we're having to do the work of, of what the RFI is, because if we're doing a public-private partnership, we don't want to limit what somebody's ability is to be able to make this work for them. And if we get too restricted, too restrictive on it, are we going to limit the responses that we get? I mean, an RFI is just that. Should we put out an RFI for the specs of what we have that can be developed? And we know that the zone, what the zoning is there. Should we just put the RFI out for the zoning? Okay, and my concern on that is that they're gonna say, okay, our income is gonna be based on these four fields. And we're gonna say, no, your income is gonna be on the three fields, because we need the one field for our youth.
For our stuff, yeah. I think that's, I think you would really wanna know what your wish list was, your items, just... And it doesn't have to mean, it doesn't mean that you get everything you want when you get a proposal.
You can have it for four hours a day on a Saturday instead of the entire day. But you don't know whether somebody wants to come build. You know, I mean, we had one proposal for indoor hockey rink. We had a proposal for, uh, in, indoor lacrosse field. We had a proposal, you know, maybe somebody wants to come in and just build pools.
I, I think that's far as...
You know, so if we limit to what we, what we want. And an RFI is just that. It's, it's, it's a request for, you can, you know, we could get RFIs back and realize, you know, this is nothing along the lines of what we wanna look like. And, and once you get the RFI, that's when you start, you know, saying to somebody, okay, that's your, that's their ideal wish list and what you can afford, but this is what the community would like, um, also. And then I think that's where the, the partnership comes in and the discussions begin. I just don't know if we're limiting ourselves too much by, by saying, okay, you can come in, but we, you know, you have to build a soccer field that's going to be used by the town on Monday, Wednesday, Friday, and then, you know, what if they didn't wanna build a soccer field? I'm not saying that. What I'm saying is that it's a town park, and it's supposed to be used for our town and for our youth and for our sports and for our leagues. And I'm saying that if you put out an RFI and everybody thinks that they're gonna have the park a hundred percent to themselves and they're gonna charge for anything that's done on that park, then, you know, to pick someone that we go, okay, we like you, but, okay, now let us tell you that we need to use the fields like this day, this day, this day, then you're putting the other people that are responding to the RFI at a disadvantage because you're negotiating the RFI after the fact, rather than putting out what you want upfront.
Well, I, I still think an RFI is, is not an RFP, but an RFI is just more fact-finding of what is out there. What, what are we not seeing as a, as a small community compared to what's out there? You're fine tuning it. I, I think that's down the road. That's, I, I...
That's an RFP. But I think that when you're asking people, okay, what's your vision, they're thinking of what their cost is and what they're going to be able to charge.
Fine.
And if we're saying after the fact, well, wait a second, we need this for our youth sports, that you're messing up their equations. Like, they should know. We, we can put...
I, I, I think, I'm confident, uh, that I can draft it. We're all members of the town board. It'll be tight enough on the law and what we anticipate for our youth and adults for that matter.
Good.
Um, and at the same time, be broad enough in scope for them to propose all kinds of uses and address the parameters legally.
Okay, and then it's...
And then...
I'm confident that you can do it, too.
No, and then, but I will say, and then we can...
And under fifteen pages. That's asking too many.
But then legally, we can negotiate off that.
Yeah.
So if they don't hit points you want them to hit, we'll make them hit it.
I'd still like to hear from the community about what their wishes and needs are.
Yeah, we can create... You have a recommend...
Yeah, but, but I can, I can...
And with generic with what we're telling them, this is one, it's a win-win relationship where both parties are satisfied with the field use, you know? And then let them throw everything at it.
I, I really think the, the broader discussion has to be is, is, you know, when we do an RFI, and Ray, I think this, you know, speaks to you, is, is that how do we, how do we get our RFI out there into the broader community? So that, so that, I mean, these, these fields, this kind of projects are, are, are national. So I think that's, that's a, one of the big questions, too, is what, what avenue do we use to, to broadcast us out there? Are there trades? Are there, because I think that this is a fantastic piece of property. I think, you know, Long Island is, is ripe to have a, a great project here. And how do we get that out? This is a fantastic thing to bring out.
Let's see what we can create. That's all.
Yeah, see what, well, it's, it's a start to see where we could go, and I'm sure at the end of the day, we can strike a balance, you know, suit everyone's needs.
So I guess the next phase, are we all comfortable with have, starting to draft the RFI?
Yeah.
Once the RFI is drafted, it will come back, um, and then we can all have the discussion again, and then, and...
Who knew three years ago the pickleball would be so famous? You know, we never knew.
I did.
Artie knew.
It might be another pickleball.
Pickleball Artie knew. And, and Ray, in the meantime, could you see if there are avenues or, or how, how other municipalities have, have gotten this, gotten this out there? All right. Very nice. Guys, thank you very, very much. Really exciting.
You really give very little power points.
I just need you.
They did a great job. You want this too?
And then you guys are next also with the two thousand eighteen Recreation Conference at Syracuse and then the, uh, the Recreation Salaries. Uh, but before we go any further, though, uh, Jim, we are, we are good to go with, uh, telephone.
I saw that. Which type of conference was it today, right? At five or something?
It could be on my schedule. It's on my schedule, and I'm...
I told them this morning. They were very happy yesterday with it, with the call.
If it's on my schedule, I'm good.
It looks like everybody's in, in place. Very quick, yeah, 'cause I got another next.
Glad we got that done. Good work.
Oh, I will. Didn't wanna, didn't wanna cram it down to supervisors, just throw it over to research.
We work together. We work together.
Well, it's important you got a bit of speed on it because it wouldn't be fair to you.
All right, Ray, the floor is yours.
Again, we want now.
Okay, this is, the, um, each year, New York State Parks and Recreation has a conference. Um, it's all, it's all different spots. This year it's in Syracuse.
I don't think I've ever had my phone on ring.
And it's just a three-day conference, Sunday, Monday, Tuesday.
One, one conversation here, 'cause it, it's really hard when you're watching the TV if there's more than one conversation going on, so...
You actually watch the TV?
No, but people keep calling me that there's too many people talking at once and they can't, they can't follow what's going on, so...
Throw them those under shuttle and pick them up. They come in first.
Hello, make sure you come here. We can't follow what's going on. We're here. Uh, it's a three-day conference, Sunday, Monday, Tuesday. I've gone numerous, numerous times over the years. It's very, it's great for networking. They have, uh, classes there that are really, really good, whether on parks or the latest in recreation or youth. Um, and then this year it's up in Syracuse, so... Seeking permission if I can go?
You drive and climb.
I'll drive.
Yep.
I think a road trip.
What's the cost?
Uh, it, it's less than a thousand dollars if you add everything. Registration is like, say, three hundred dollars.
There's a resolution in the pack and I didn't put it in the pack date, I believe.
Yes.
I did put it in the pack date, yeah, my first one.
And that, and it conforms to the tribal policy, of course.
Of course, yeah.
Evening socials, including mixing around night out and night in.
I don't do those things. I gotta go early.
Yeah, I like that. Yeah, let's pick for that.
So, yeah, it, it'd be a thousand or less. I mean, I won't spend, uh, believe it. I'm in and out.
All right, very good. I'm, I'm fine with this. Everybody, well, we'll go through the resolutions, but, yeah.
Yeah, I don't, I don't have an issue with it yet. I'm a big proponent of continuing as you can.
Bring us back some great ideas. Yes.
I think it's actually cool for the classes.
And if there's really a good band at that roaring twenty party, then A three for the concert series, yeah.
Bring you up to anything to settle, isn't it?
All right.
Okay, this is the, the next one.
Recreation Salaries. The next one, yeah, is the Recreation Salaries. Ray, Ray had been here a couple weeks ago, I guess, with Recreation Salaries, and, and we've met several times since then, um, and he is coming back with the next proposal.
Yeah, I mean, what happened was, and you, you know, I was against it first, but after our, our discussions, you know, we, we take a second look at it. Uh, and what we did is we really condensed everything to just, uh, make it more efficient. And Kelly, actually, who's not here, and I think she's got sick, she, she worked on this for us.
I think you and Judy and Kelly did it very nicely.
Judy, Judy was a big help as well, because, again, she's coming in, uh, not knowing how the system worked in the past. It was great to have another set of eyes on it. Does everybody have one?
Mm-hmm, yep.
Uh, so basically, we just shrunk down all the positions down to three, four, five, six, six positions. Uh, and so instead of doing the levels, if, if one of the employees does a great job, we can actually put him in a higher title. So it just simplifies everything. It, it's much easier to review, look at, and it's much easier with the steps. There is no more steps, so...
Who needs one more panel?
Uh, yeah.
And so that if somebody comes back year after year, right now we have the two percent, because I think there's a question about whether the two percent or three percent. So it's at the two percent. So there's a starting salary, and as they come back year after year on call, if they meet the certain number of hours, they'll, they'll be eligible for the two percent increase.
Yeah, one of the things we did discover, with, with the system that I had, um, we allowed the supervisors of each of the, the sub-departments to, uh, let's say, increase their employees either one step or two step based on performances. But I think what we found out over the last couple of years, they, they were a little bit liberal with their, uh, step increases, and this kind of prevents that. Um, you could just get the one step increase if you did well year over year, and that's just aligns with everybody else here in town. So I thought it was a couple of good meetings that we had, and it worked out.
Very nice.
And the second one is all line. They're all lined. All the employees are lined up based on that salary schedule.
And with the Recreation Specialists, I think that was a very good way to do that in there, based on their specialty. I think that works well.
So it's simple, it's easy, uh, and I like that we came to an agreement, so...
And it's a two percent increase rate?
Two percent, Joe, two percent. Except for me. Thank you very much.
Appreciate that.
I want ten.
John, do we have some? Okay, so we'll, we'll start with, you wanna start with resolutions, and then we can, is that okay with everybody?
Ooh, I'm gonna look over your shoulder, so I can grab my, such a hurry to get here.
No, I got them. They came in.
Okay, everybody ready? Actually, you have a copy here, too.
Yeah, I'm gonna go first.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ashley.
Ashley, thanks for all that talking. I don't know, my ears...
Next time you have to run in, Ashley.
Okay, there you go.
You did, you did.
Keep stood, running.
Just for, for everybody's information, uh, we did pass the fiscal impact statement, um, resolution last time. So everybody has, uh, worked very hard to get the fiscal impact statements in. They're not, they're not required yet because that was set up to the state, and we have to wait for it to come back to the state to be, uh, fully implemented. So this gives us actually a very nice, uh, chance to give feedback on what we want as a board, if something...
I was gonna say, I, I know my secretary was saying, let's not say secretary, the board coordinator was saying, um, with even, uh, ad hoc committee appointments to volunteer committees that they want.
It's just a check no, that's all. Because some committees are...
You're killing a tree, this, I know.
But some committees are paying, some committees aren't.
Well, the committees are paid, I mean, sure.
So this way, it's just, it's just the standard. And it's really just to get in the practice, too, if we wanna tweak it later on down the road. But I think in the beginning, um, just to have it for each one, and then this way, there's not a question. Uh, so the... We have a lag. Uh, the first one is appoint student intern to the accounting department. Uh, next is, this is the one that Dawn was talking about, home rule request for the governor to include Riverhead Town Census Track for downtown Riverhead and the contiguous tracks for Calvert, Epcal and the State Economic Opportunities Zone Program. Um, the next one is award bid, awards the bid for the annual construction contract, so it'll be nice, and then the rec trail can, uh, start to move forward. Ratifies and accepts the resignation of a part-time police officer.
Well, that's not what hers said.
There's a couple, there's a couple different ones. Let me know when everybody's ready to... Okay, uh, okay, accepts, accepts the resignation of a part-time police officer. Oh, I'm sorry, just did that one, sorry. Ratifies and accepts the reservation, oh, okay, resignation of a part-time police officer. That's, uh, number two. That's WS five. And we are accepting applications now for part-time police officers. If anybody's interested, they should get their application in to the chief police right away. Thank you. Um, the next is accepts the resignation of a public safety dispatcher.
Why did we leave in the police department? What's going on here? Come here, over.
Uh, authorize the supervisor to execute an agreement. Um, this one was just added. What is this one here, John? This one just got added.
This is generally authorized, uh, Judy's department.
Oh, okay. This is, yes, this is for traffic sa- for driving, uh, safety. Training. Um, next one is ratifies and accepts the resignation of a call-in detention attendant. SW nine is, uh, State Environmental Quality Review Act classifies actions and requests lead agency for special permit and site plan application known as two oh three dash two thirteen East Main Street, Riverhead. Um, the next one is, uh, State Environmental Quality Review Act classification action and request lead agency for special permit and site plan application known as fifteen thirty-five Route fifty-eight LLC Car Wash Restaurant and Retail. Catch your name. The SW eleven is authorize attendance at the two thousand eighteen New York State Association of Municipal Purchasing Officers Annual Professional Development Conference. Twelve is set salaries for the two thousand eighteen call-in personnel for the Riverhead Rec Department. Fourteen is authorize attendance at the two thousand eighteen New York State Park and Recreation Society Seventy-Eighth Annual, Annual Conference. That's the ones we just spoke about. Fifteen adopts a local law to increase salary of highway town superintendent. Um, I will pull that one till we have Geo here. Uh, sixteen is adopts a local law amending chapter two thirty-seven entitled Highway, Streets and Sidewalks of the Riverhead Town Code. Uh, seventeen is adopt a local law amending chapter two eighty-nine entitled Vehicles, Traffic and Parking Regulations of the Riverhead Town Code. Section nine, sto- snow events. Um, eighteen is authorize the supervisor to execute an agreement authorizing the town to accept funds from Sepa County Office for the aging to supplement the town's residential repair program for the el- for the elderly. Elderly, that's just reimbursement we receive. What was that? Yeah, there's a lot of backup on that one. Just let me know when you're... Wow, yeah.
Talk about yelling, right?
Anything from the county is about five hundred pages.
Those damn attorneys involved.
Yep, everybody ready for nineteen?
Yeah.
We send's resolution number four seventy... Rescinds Resolution Number four seventy-four, uh, titled Adopt a Local Law to Amend Chapter two eighty-nine enti- entitled Vehicles, Traffic and Parking Regulations of the Riverhead Town Code. This is, uh, because we passed the Resolution Number, where is it? Uh, Resolution one ninety-three adopted on March twentieth. Um, this one needed to be rescinded in order for that one to be, um. That was the determination Diane, that I talked to you about yesterday? Thank you. Uh, twenty is adopt a local law to amend chapter two eighty-nine entitled Vehicles, Traffic and Parking Regulations of the Riverhead Town Code. Stop and yield inter- intersections, railroad crossings, parking fields, Master Realty Subdivision of Young Avenue, Calverton. Uh, that was following the public hearing we had last time. Authorizes execution of a contract with seed clam administrator.
Oh, that's, uh, we're sorry, okay.
This is, yeah. Uh, this is, uh, twenty-two authorizes, uh, Larry Lee, Lawrence Levy, non-pro-tung to provide additional cable vision production services regarding the continuation of a public hearing, oh, I hate reading this one, regarding the qualified and eligible status of Calverton Aviation and Technology LLC to purchase and develop premises known as Enterprise Park at Calverton on March nineteenth, two thousand eighteen, at six P M. at the Pulaski Street Elementary School, three hundred Pulaski Street, Riverhead, and cable cast production of the Engineering Department Stormwater Presentation at the Rowan Oak Elementary School, five forty Rowan Oak Avenue, Riverhead, on March seventh, two thousand eighteen, and contractual payment for services rendered.
Good lord.
Wait, I missed a word. I know. Well, that was because, in the way the contract was written, it didn't cover, uh, the payment for him to do, to do that, so that.
Were you off-premise?
Uh, it wasn't just off-premise, it was also because we didn't have the cameras there, so it was, it was the, uh, yeah, it was the actual, to to bring the equipment there. Um, twenty-three is ratifies reappointment of a member to the Riverhead Farmland Preservation Committee.
Yay.
Yeah. Uh, twenty-four is ratifies, uh, reappointment to a member of the Riverhead Farmland Preservation Committee. Once again, we'll do these as as, uh, uh, we'll group, well, yeah. Uh, ratifies reappointment of a member to the Riverhead Farmland Preservation Committee.
Yay.
Uh, twenty-six appoints a member to the Riverhead Farmland Preservation Committee. Twenty-seven approves the chapter two fifty-five application of a sports car club to the American New York region. Twenty-eighth authorizes the supervisor to execute a license agreement, uh, renew a letter with Wading River, uh.
Waddington.
Waddington Real.
You're right, it's in Wading River.
There you go. Yes, supplies to the parking lot to the, uh, west of where they are. They have a couple, uh, spots there. Reappoints member to the Architectural Review Board. Uh, thirty is appoints a member to the con- uh, Conservation Advisory Council. Thirty-one is appoints a member to the Recreation Advisory Committee. Uh, thirty-two.
Going back to the CAC, I I realize that we looked at that, and five members really haven't been reappointed like this twenty thirteen. So instead of.
Which committee you took, the best?
CAC.
Okay.
Conserva- so I I asked, instead of blanketly just reappointing everybody, I want to sit and talk with them about staggering their terms, so.
Okay, I think it's a great idea.
So we'll have.
And back to the ARB, Catherine, I want to thank you for finding this member, because we did interview him last night in the joint meeting of Glenn Marks and ARB, and he was magnificent, so good job in finding him.
Wow, yeah, resolutions put in already, that's pretty good, from last night to now, that's pretty good.
Yep, we will correct.
I guess so.
Yeah, he's good.
Um, thirty-two reappoints a member to the Recreation Advisory Committee. Uh, thirty-three reappoints a member to the Recreation Advisory Committee. Thirty-four reappoints a member to the Recreation Advisory Committee. Thirty-five reappoints a member to the Recreation Advisory Committee. Uh, thirty-six appoints, uh, the creation appointment of members to a downtown revitalization committee. Uh, this is the committee that we had spoke about in the beginning of the year. Uh, we do not have anybody, uh, filling any positions at this time. What we did is just, it's the creation of the, uh, the committee itself.
Right, and do you have to be a member, or in, or no? You don't have to live or own property in downtown to be a member of this committee? What does it say? I haven't seen this yet.
The, all of these fall underneath our committee appointments, because there's a committee appointment, and then this is, this is for this particular committee. So that one, I believe, is overarching, um, and then this falls under the.
I have, I I love it, I can't wait to show it.
This is new one, did you send that?
That one came very late, so I don't know if you want to consider it.
Okay, so number thirty-seven is exercise an option to renew an agreement with the Fundamental Business Services Parking Violation Enforcement Services.
This is, uh, renewing an agreement that had expired.
Okay.
The master's office, I get more pictures of the board, but, yeah.
Yeah, that's, uh, the people, would they go after our tickets for us?
Yeah.
To contrast.
They do too good a job sometimes.
Did you guys want to say something?
Yeah, when it comes down to the, um, the creation and appointment of members to a downtown revitalization committee, and it talks about voting members, and it talks about, um, you know, different things, I just don't want them, I just want to make sure that there's no, um, contrasting opinions with Landmarks, ARB, Business Business Improvement District, Parking District, and I'm just wondering how we're going to coordinate all of those voting committees, and then we're putting another committee on, which is the Downtown Revitalization Committee.
How do we do it now?
Well, we we fixed where ARB and Landmarks meet together when it comes to historic structures, and and then this is another meeting, uh, committee, I guess, for the downtown revitalization, so we would probably just have to include them into the meetings with ARB and Landmarks, because I know Landmarks right now is working on co- um, code amendments for the, uh, five-story buildings in downtown, if we were going to proceed with that. I just don't know which.
Is it safe to say that this committee is more of a visionary, more of a long-term playing type thing?
Yes, and 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 the same as, the same as we're doing, I, uh, you know, coming in here, you know, a lot of the things that we, that I've discovered is a lot of things are done in isolation, in silos, and really, you know, what we've been trying to do is have.
We like that, we control that way, you know.
Yeah, is to have, you know, as we did with the tri board meeting, to have different groups work together, and and to have, you know, there's, people are charged with different things, um, and then when they come together to make the decisions on larger projects, that's when you come together to make the decisions on the larger projects. But, so, so that would be, that would be different, and also as far as the landmarks present, would you, did you want to come up and, and Emery helped draft this along with Dawn, so.
Look at the wording, the recommendation only goes to the town board.
Yeah.
So the town board is going to filter all the information from any and all committees they get a recommendation about.
It's the first time I've seen it, that's all.
Yeah, no, I know, so actually, it's going to come directly to you, and you may have different recommendations from Landmarks, and you'll.
No, I think it's a great idea. I think more eyes on downtown is a good thing. I just don't, I, and recommendations from this committee will be given to the town board, and then we can then go to our individual committees and boards and say, this is what the recommendations are, and where are we in with that?
Well, I think that was part of the reason that we had asked, we we, when we fir- when it first came on, is to have the different committees come and present to the board. So I think maybe what what should happen is maybe Landmarks Preservation Committee should should come and present, um, to the board their goals for the year. Um, this way, everybody's, you know, we kind of have an idea, and this way, people aren't doing double work. That's something that's being being done in the Landmarks Preservation Committee, isn't be re- being repeated somewhere else, um, and that, you know.
We're done with thinking, gotta love it.
Still working together.
Yeah, and I'll just add, for Landmarks, that's a code provision. Their duties, roles are in the code.
Right.
This.
Is advisory.
Is advi- strictly advisory.
Visionary.
Yeah.
Advisory.
Because I, I know Landmarks is working on code revisions when it comes to the five-story buildings, which, once the code is drafted and the committee bounces around, then it'll be presented to the town board as to what they would like to see as far as the code being changed for downtown.
Good, it'd be nice to see the recommendation.
Okay.
Okay, yep, very good. Um, and this was the last resolution that was just added, which promotes a detective?
Yes, I think, right, I contracted it for five years and graded it off, right, unless it's some, it's anyway, certainly, it's why they should have.
And there is one more, Jeff Murphy dropped it off.
No, we're not doing it.
Not off the presses.
Yeah.
It's not, it's not about that secret thing, is it?
This is for the, uh, parking.
Yes. Well, it really is still there. And this one is a, uh, classifies action pursuant to secret as a type one action and refers proposed law to amend chapter three oh one parking to recover, to require site plan applications for residential dwelling unit, to comply with the parking code to involve agencies with a request for lead agency status. So what this is, is, uh, we had the public hearing the other day, um, and this is to request that the town board is, uh, lead agency for the action, uh, for secret to move forward with that. That's exciting.
Oh, it's, it's, it's.
It is exciting, it is.
Oh, it is.
It is exciting.
Sure it is, yeah.
These are good changes.
Love secret, yes.
Okay, so next we have. Well, uh, Safe Roots to School. So, uh, we have Dawn through Ernesto.
Tim Gannon.
Come on. Hello, everybody.
Oh, I don't like anything that looks that big.
End up dumb for everybody, perfect.
So, um, Safe Roots to School was a grant that we had gotten through DOT, uh, around, in and around then. One of the recommendations of the committee was to, at that time, was to make Cranberry Street a one-way. And that, um, kind of gummed up the works, I think, kind of globally.
Yeah, yeah. Dawn and I met with the school district, uh, the latter part of last year, and talking about the work that we were proposing and the funds that we had left, and they really were not excited about the one-way street there.
Yeah, so that's kind of where I think it got stuck, and.
Yep.
I I disagree with it, it's okay.
Can I just ask a question? The Sa- the Safe Roots to School grant, it was a one-time grant, or it's an ongoing grant, or?
It's an ongoing grant, so it was adopt.
We keep massaging it, but.
Yeah, so it, and and it's a no-match grant, it's through New York State Department of Transportation. We had gotten around four hundred and.
It was four hundred and seventy-four thousand.
At the time, to do a bunch of different improvements, and, um.
And when was that starting? When did we originally get that?
That was back in two thousand and nine, and it was for design and construction.
Okay.
So the, um, it involved improvements to some of the intersections along Rowan Oak Avenue, um, Pulaski Street, Cranberry Street. They, uh, it included some equipment also for speed monitoring and signage. And so, when I started in May, it was sort of stalled. I said, let's pick it up. We we kicked around a bunch of different ideas, and we did meet, and some of you have heard the speech before, so we're just, but but it's come to a new, new point. We sat with Ernesto and Drew. Um, the idea was to let's redirect the funds if we can get them, because they got, they got deobligated, because it had been such a long time, so, um.
So, I'm sorry, have we done any of it yet?
So, a little, a little bit of the design we did, um, and we had, did we draw, we draw down about thirty and change?
Yeah, we drew down twenty-nine thousand, two hundred and eleven dollars for design work that was done by Dunn Engineering.
And that was back in two thousand and nine?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
And, uh, they wanted us to, they wanted to see, um, actual plans before we were able to progress and do any additional, uh, drawdowns, and we weren't appointing, um, a while back, and Cranberry Street was being discussed.
There's a lot of issues with Cranberry Street, we're doing engineering, and everything else, that was a lot, I think that was a stall for a lot of it, so.
And then in the interval, uh, the county, we did Rowan Oak Avenue, and they, so they modified some of those intersections that we addressed in this, uh, grant also. So when we rethought it, we said, well, what could we use the funding for to make it, you know, safe? So one of the things that, that I noticed, and other people agreed, uh, who use the same areas, was that there's a sidewalk that's here on Pulaski Street that runs up on North Griffin Avenue on the west side, and it stops here. And then, then it's a sort of a sloped grass area down, and then it turns into School Street after Cranberry, and then there's, uh, a new turf field here, and a lot of the students walk from the high school in the roadway, because cars park on either side, and the grass is sloped, and so we said, you know, well, what can we do really simply to use the rest of the funding? So, um, engineering was kind enough to draw a plan for that, and it came in for a little less than we had originally.
I'd love to see what you're gonna do with it, that that slope, because I often thought about that.
Retaining wall.
Yeah, retaining wall.
It's got to be, yeah.
Yeah, right, and 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 upper part, on upper side, something that the kids can jump off into the street. Maybe some of the parking up there, too, on the side of the road, because it's tight when the parents park, yeah, right along front of the turf field.
And there's like a speed, a piece of school, the speed equipment, too, like a, like a one of the speed, well, the speed signs was incorporated into the funding, so. And Jody took it up to the school district. I think they were pretty receptive to the idea, simple, they did, when they redid the middle school parking lot, they did put like tabs to sidewalks there, so it would just connect up everything, it would run right from Harrison all the way around and complete that, uh, and make a real simple, safe project.
Would the sidewalk be on top of the retaining wall, or what would I do?
The unbacked.
Are you gonna, you're just asking me back and then put a, okay.
And then a few steps to get up to the field.
Nice place to have the CD on.
So, um, we went back to DOT with the idea, and there was a little bit of technical work that needed to be done prior to resubmitting, and one of those things was a bat, long-year bat study that Jeff Seaman was kind enough to conduct for us.
What? I'm sorry, I didn't hear that.
Long-year bats, potentially, there's like about three trees on this, um, west side of, uh.
Does Mark come for me?
Yeah, so anyway.
But not a problem, because the long-year bat, you can't do any clearing between April and October, so.
But we've, we have concluded that there are no bats, actually, we're not batting, only a little.
Good job.
So, um, so that was happy news, and so, uh, DOT said, resubmit the application, so when we looked at that just last week, Frank's like, you know, we need to re-sign the application, and I, so it occurred to us that we have two new board members, let's, let's bring it back and just make sure everybody's okay. We'll need to re-sign the application, uh, do a new reso, authorizing signature, and submit, and then we'll be back in for a little later.
And so, what, what is the proposed budget on what you're trying to do?
You have it?
Well, yep, I have the estimate. Uh, it comes in at three hundred and eighty-five thousand, nine hundred and seventy-nine dollars.
All right, so three eighty-nine, so twenty percent contingency, right.
And then twenty-nine, twenty-nine's on top of.
We already drew that down.
We already drew that down, yeah.
All right, so we have like seventy-five?
Yeah, uh, we don't, I mean, you know, technically, we don't have anything left.
I just have a question, in Pulaski Street School, and the, the traffic light that that is there, um, can that have a turn? Because it, the two roads are off, are they? Is there any way to add just a, a, a traffic light that has a turn, a green turn on it? Because it it it's kind of confused.
The chief and I have met.
I don't know which one that would be.
It's Griffin, it's Griffin and North Griffin.
The chief and I have met with the school district, and the school district has said, has made recommendations to the chief as far as the timing of the lights and and things of that nature, but because all the, the buses go out that way, and now we're directing all the traffic that way, coming out of the middle school parking lot on School Street, we're directing all the traffic to go that way, that, I I get what you're saying, but the recommendations that came back from the school district and the chief, and we should have the chief come in and explain that to us, because he's just made adjustments to the light, but apparently, there was a problem with just a right turn there, right turn signal.
No, I don't, I don't mean, I don't mean a right turn signal, I'm, I'm, I mean.
A turn arrow.
A, a turn arrow that gives you a little bit of time for, for.
For somebody to get out of the way.
For the, for the turn, for the turn to happen, and it's timed so that that becomes red before the other person goes.
About ten years ago, when it first got elected, I had the same, because I was driving a school bus, and I had the same problem. And I I know that that gas, that the old BB gas station, there's a brownfield opportunity, I was hoping that we could realign the road using some of that, just to get it, at least not offset anymore, and that, that never happened, we just.
Right, but the chief had discussions with the school district about, you know, making the, um, light, uh, from, if you're on Griffin and you're headed north, like, that's red for a little longer, so that you can, if you're coming out of the school, go right or left, but, you know, it's confusing, because it's the same thing where Osborne comes into Harrison, where you don't know that the people that are heading north on Harrison, coming to the high school, that they have a red light and they're stopped, so he has that, it's just.
The buses could change their route, so they don't use that intersection, but we won't go there.
The whole thing is all, well, since you're the engineer, could you take a, just take a look at that and 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 consider if there's anything, or maybe work with the chief?
We've had the same complaint, with the traffic signal, and the way it was, it's the best.
The best that it could possibly be, okay.
And you're not a traffic engineer, are you?
So, I will look into the left, uh, which way do you want, uh, southbound, east and west?
I would, I would ask the school district, because I would say that they would have the priority of coming in and out of that, out of that lot, um, and they certainly have more traffic coming out of their lot, so, um, I I would, I would ask them if they have any, you know, recommendations, since they're doing it on a daily basis, and, you know, see if anything can, can be done, take another set of eyes at it, since we have some funding.
And chief has all the notes from the meetings that we've had, and there isn't any funding left, right?
There, there, yeah, so this was deobligated, so the dilemma was that we did spend some of the money, so once you do that, and then you don't follow through, the potential is they could request that we reimburse that, so we said, let's not do that, let's go try to get the money again.
Okay.
So that was the plan, and that's what we're asking to do.
This is wonderful, I'll tell you, because more and more people are walking to school, right? They like the school, you know, they don't like, they don't want to get up at the six o'clock bus, they'll ride, go to school.
Yeah.
So sidewalks are very.
I just think it would, you know, really kind of clear up problems, it's been there for a while, they've done so many things to improve the area, the district, and, you know, us. Let's, let's finish it off and just make it so that you can walk on a sidewalk all around the entire complex.
And go back to one-way street.
And once the bus barn was, was, you know, eliminated, that kind of helped that issue too, because now that's not there.
Has your own road.
And, and the chief, like I said, we had a meeting at the school district a few months ago, which is why when school, right before school was opening, because now you, coming out of the middle school parking lot, you can either make a right or go straight, you can no longer make a left turn. So that seemed to alleviate a lot of the problems at that intersection at Cranberry and School Street.
I still think, and, and I'll just throw it out there, because we're talking about it, and I like to throw things out there that make no sense, but that Cranberry, that Cranberry Street of one-way, I realized it was controversy. Now, I think a lot of controversy had to do when the bus garage was located on Griffin path. Now that all the buses are entering and exiting on the west side of the school, onto Osborne or Harrison, I still think that being a one-way in will clear up a lot of traffic hazards on Rowan Oak.
At the time, though, there were, there were two businesses that got developed on the street that weren't there originally, so those people that wanted to go to those businesses would have to go all the way around and come up from the School Street to get in. So it was, because those-
They have to go down Pulaski to Rowan Oak in order to get to the businesses.
Right, the cardiologist, right, and then there's the other one.
And when you leave, you go by School Street, right?
No, I'm saying that, that the people that are coming from western Riverhead, like Wading River, they would have to go up to Pulaski Street, go all the way down Rowan Oak, and then to Cranberry Street to get to those two businesses, so that's what-
And then to leave, they would have to go all the way, you'd be pumping them back onto School Street.
Yeah, it is, it's about, it's about a hundred yards to the next intersection.
Okay, well, the businesses, you could go talk to the businesses, because the businesses didn't want to see it one-way, and neither did the school district, so you're more than welcome to go talk to them.
Aye, sure.
I, I just, you know, and I know, I didn't disagree with that at the time, because I was actually involved with, when Chris was working on it, I was like, oh, that's kind of an interesting idea, but it just seemed to be like the problem.
I'm all worried about all the cars that are lined up, they're trying to get down on Rowan Oak Avenue at, at four-thirty or four o'clock in the afternoon, and with the day, and it's, it's horrendous.
That's weird, I had a different word.
Yeah.
But thank you for getting the money back and following this through, I think-
We don't have it back yet.
Not quite yet. When will we, when will we know what, the plans are being submitted to them for review again?
Well, yes, we have to submit the application to them, and then they'll review it, and hopefully we trigger all funding.
Ten years for it, it must become good.
Hopefully within the next couple of months.
Okay. All right, very good, and that'd be nice to be able to do the work here in the summer.
Yeah, yeah, so it would have to be during the summer, because otherwise-
Has anybody been to the school recently to present the new plan?
Yep, chief and I did, in the fall.
We talked, I didn't go to that meeting, but we talked it over, and Mark Finiter came and met with us here.
After.
He was skeptical, we wouldn't ever get it done, I was like, now we're getting it done.
All right, very good, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Care to lock the door?
And it's so good.
The original plan told the sidewalks on both sides.
Because it's based on time, it doesn't matter, based on, that it should be X amount of time or-
Okay. Okay.
It's okay.
All right, we had, we had the municipal garage and Geo Woodson was going to come, he, he is doing, not available now, he's involved in a deposition, so we will move from here, we'll go into executive session, and then hopefully he will be finished, and we can come back out to discuss that one. So can I have a first and second to go into executive session for a personnel? Matters leading to the possible hiring of an employee, matters leading to the possible promotion of an employee, matters leading to the possible appointment of a committee member, contractual negotiations with a young, and litigation town of Riverhead, Suffolk IDA, and the Suffolk County Community College Culinary Arts.
Motion.
Second?
Second.
First and second, and all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Opposed?
Jimmy, you said this was going to be like a ten-hour work session, I got breakfast.
I had it, I-